This is the new. This is the new sound system. It's on all the time. Although it's speak on it, you don't have to push any buttons. You just have to get close to it. Same way up there in that microphone. Okay.
We'll call.
Victor. Okay. King? Not. No, I believe that is Jim King. Like he's present, Aaron Chase. Rick Stewart.
Here.
Eddie Harris Howard. Amy Wool. And Dorothy. And Anthony West is our consultant. He's on, but he's not required. For his apps.
Yeah, this is Jim King. I'm here.
Oh, sorry, I did.
Okay, moving on to gender. Item three is acceptance of minutes from the June 12th. Read. A motion.
I have. Hard people didn't have a chance to look at that. You could review it tonight or continue with this. People didn't receive a hard copy. You've received the email. So I have hard copies I could hand out. Ready to approve them.
Wait on proving that.
One pulse.
Montana motion. Make a motion. We. A discussion for June 20 minutes. Greg.
Nope, they're good.
All in favor?
This is Jim King. I'm in favor.
Mr. Chairman. Let's check in with Jimmy and Greg to see how how is the sound so far?
Pretty good.
Not good.
We can hear Rick really well, and that came through pretty good, but definitely you have to be close to the mic to hit for us to hear you.
Yes.
Good, Jim?
Yeah, you're good, Rick.
Yeah.
And we heard Don.
You're good. You're good. Yeah.
Did you? Moving on, page 2412, which is item four, the Zusk House. And the first step would be a presentation on their part.
Good evening, guys. Thank you.
You've already my name is Ben Skilling. So I'm the president of this house. This is Josh Stover. He's the manager of the home. We've been there since January, operating as a sober living home recovery residence.
And everybody here, okay? Jim, Greg?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear. Yeah.
Find out new sounds.
No, it's fine. I could hear it. So we've been there since January. What we're asking for is a change of use so that we can apply to DHS and the state of Maine to have more oversight and become a licensed facility. We understand that this same property was licensed as a nursing home a few years ago and then went over, went through at least two other changes of use through you guys over the years, and we want to kind of revert it back to a residential care facility. The state fire marshal calls it something a little different than we find in in the code here. And I'll spare you guys all the details. Everyone has a copy of our application. And I guess we'll just we'll take questions if you guys have them.
That's it. That's your presentation.
Yeah.
I'm going to ponder as to how to proceed. Greg, we've got your notes. Do you want to talk to your notes?
Sure. I mean, my my first question, sorry, can't be there in person, guys. My first question was specifically asking about the renaming to the non nursing home convalescent home. Looking at our zoning ordinance, we have nursing and convalescent home is listed only one place in our ordinance and it's associated with the use and it's commercial, commercial considered low impact. But if we go with the nursing home label, the concern that I had was we have specific parking requirements for the nursing home and based on your sketch, you're you definitely do not have enough spaces to meet the requirements of a nursing home. So I think the first question was, I mean, that's really probably going to be a question for Dawn and for the town is is truly what do we categorize this? Is it its own category or is it specifically going to fall into this nursing convalescent home category?
Okay, we feel like the the convalescent portion of that designation is appropriate for us because convalescent is just any person recovering from an illness. So technically Webster's definition, it can describe what we're doing. We went over the parking arrangement again this evening, and there's a section in the application that we sent you. It's marked staff, but really there are six spaces there. So I think that meets the requirement that gives us seventeen spaces, and we also have overflow use across the street of at least a dozen other spaces that we could we can use if we have an event or if we need to like we had an open house recently and we're able to use that lot across the street for daytime parking, not permanent parking.
Yeah, okay, just just you're aware, if we're if we're using that definition on page twenty of our zoning ordinance, it requires one parking space per every three beds and one parking space for each employee based on the expected average employee occupancy. So it sounds like you have the employee based based on your application. You're asking for fifty one beds. So simple math says you need seventeen places spaces plus that five or six, if you think you need six for staff. Just so you understand, that's just what our ordinance requires. If those if the spaces across the street are owned and part of your property, then we probably could move forward.
Yeah, they are. Those spaces are not, but they're rarely used, and we've gotten the okay to use them.
It's good, Josh, you ask. So we have we there was a conditional use application done prior to us, and you guys had approved it, and it shows that there is twenty six parking spots there. I have a copy of that right here if you guys want to see it.
So you're saying your existing site just has the the picture we got doesn't match what you actually have for parking availability?
I have. I just found this today.
Okay, I mean, as long as you can work that out to make sure you have the seventeen spaces. I don't necessarily have a problem with the layout. That's something you got to work out with Mark. I just based on the sketch that we got, it only had roughly, you know, there was a staff area, but there was only about twelve spaces truly identified on that sketch. So I just wanted to make sure we're meeting the requirements before we even move forward.
All right. And with I mean, residential treatment, I mean, most people that come in are not going to have their own vehicle. So there's going to be open parking spots.
Yeah, again, I'm just going back to if we're calling it nursing, nursing home, convalescent home, that's the requirement. We just if that's the category we're putting it in, if we called it something else, then we might have a different application process. So I'm just trying to make sure we put it in the right bin before we look at it. But if you've got the spaces to meet twenty one and you can prove that to Mark, that's fine. That's not really our requirement. I just wanted to be clear that based on the sketch you provided, that's not adequate. So I could put a contingency on if we move forward and decided to adopt and that sort of thing. One of the contingency would be to make sure Mark checks Mark and Dawn check to make sure that you have seventeen spaces on that property for for parking and the and the staff's parking additionally, just to meet ours town ordinance. That's just a requirement.
That was a mistake on our part, and we apologize. And we did, like Josh said, we located a previous application that was approved that shows like the surplus spaces across the street. And I think what I'm looking at is it's kind of overkill for parking for what we need. So we should be all right.
Yeah, I I don't want to get hung up in technicalities. I just I know this has been discussed in a lot of other properties that we have to make sure we're allowing adequate parking to meet. And again, based on the definition. Because if we were zoning it as commercial, limited commercial, there's a different requirement for parking. But if we're going with the nursing home, then we have this requirement is very explicitly spelled out. So I just want to make sure we're meeting the requirements, and that's all.
Yeah, and that we've looked at the different zoning. And that's what we do need. We do need the nursing home and convalescent home. That's the closest, most exact one we could find. So we're that's where we're at.
Yeah, and I'm not in disagreement. I just wanted to confirm with Dawn and the town to make sure that was the category that they put this project in. If that was what they did, then I'm I'm fine with moving forward with that category. I just I didn't feel like it was an exact, you know, it wasn't word for word. So I wanted to make sure what bin we put it in before we move forward.
Greg, you all set?
I think so.
Jim?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with it. I I think that what Greg was expressing was some of the same concern I have. I don't know. I think we need to take a look at our parking requirements, but we have to work with the zoning ordinance that we currently have.
You're done.
Yes, I'm sorry. Could you tell me what could you tell me what the the certification of your facility is?
What it is currently?
What is it? What is it?
Oh, currently it's a recovery home. So it's technically a single family dwelling. And the state has special accommodations that it gives folks to operate as a recovery home, which is basically unlicensed. We do have a certification, but it's not.
Which certification by?
It's from MAR, so the main association of recovery residences. So we have to have protocol for virtually everything, intakes, discharge, safety plan, fire drill, all that stuff. And once we get into the next phase, if things go well today, there'll be more oversight on top of that. So that certification doesn't go away. We still have to meet those requirements, but it'll be additional stuff from DHS for that type of facility, like twenty four seven staffing, which we're not required technically to have any, you know, permanent staffing there twenty four hours a day.
So you're coming here under the auspice of residential program for alcoholics, correct?
Yeah.
But then you're going to turn around at what point and change this? Why are we doing it today if you're going to change it tomorrow? That's the question.
Oh, so we're going to essentially be serving the same type of people. The only thing that's going to change is having licensure will allow us to build main care, will allow people to get treatment and not just a place to live where we do our best to keep an eye on them. So our mission is just about the same. We'll have clinicians, groups, group therapy, vocational assistance. There'll be a step down program. So after they're done, the six months with us, they'll move to another place that is more like what we're doing now license wise, if they're not ready to get fully back on their feet. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense what you want to do. It doesn't make sense that you're stepping from one thing to to another. You've already got what you have.
Yeah, we do.
You already have a program. It's already going.
We have a sober living home that is much different than a treatment facility. A treatment facility can provide a lot more care and help to people. Right now, we can't the staff can't spend one on one time with folks. We can't track where they're going during the day. So it's a whole different ballgame.
Still confuse me. You what do you have now for a program right now? Just tell me what it is.
Recovery residents.
You have how many patients?
We have thirty one people there now. Yeah.
And your goal is to change this to some kind of nursing and I it's gonna make a whole different ballgame for you facility, right?
Yeah, it's going to allow us to pay staff and treat people the way they should be treated.
The DPA should have a lot of a lot of different life than you've got now. But I still don't understand why at this point you want to change.
I don't know if the why is pertinent to what we're doing here. It's been my goal for a long time. I've been in recovery myself fifteen years. Our executive director has been in the field for thirty years. We want to continue our work. And we want to provide the best treatment in the state, and that's our goal. So that's why.
So you it's a different facility than the one you're working in now?
No.
The same building?
Same building.
And you're coming to us wanting to maybe change, which is very little.
And stroke.
Can you tell me how these people are going to aid or survive financially?
The residents?
Yes.
They're going to be they're allowed to work after a very short period of time.
But what happens before they work?
Main care reimburses it, or we have a scholarship fund that that will cover their costs until they start working.
Will they be coming to the town for some help?
Not anymore. No, right now we send people to GA pretty often.
So they're they don't I'm not going to ask us for anything.
I don't think so. They might come apply for jobs.
It's answering my question.
We're not. We're not going to. They're not going to apply for GA because GA pays rent. Once we get licensed, they're not paying rent. They're paying for the whole shebang, the treatment, room and board, all that stuff. Main it'll be main care reimbursable and probably private insurance if we get to that level. But what the plan is to work with DHS and be reimbursable by main care.
Main care is going to pay you. You're you're really going to have to go through a lot. I mean, you're going to have to.
There's not not a whole lot left. We have all the pieces in place. This is one of the things that we need that we need to go through. The next step is a similar thing with the state fire marshal's office, but they're already sort of been on board because there there's a push to open more of these facilities. So that would be the next step. And then application with DHS, they come for a visit, they check our paperwork.
Oh, I know what they do.
Yeah.
I know exactly what they do, and they've done that. But I think you're making it sound pretty simple. It's not going to be as simple as you think it is. I don't believe I hope it is for your sake. But it's changing and coming and going has you know, it is what it is. And that's what you want to do.
I mean, like I said, our director's been doing this for thirty plus years. I've been doing it for over a dozen in this field, and we believe we know what we're getting into.
My only question, your clients, where do they come? They go through a treatment before they come to you, right?
Most of the time, though, at least go through a medical detox that'll be a week or two long. We do take folks that come from longer term programming. But they have to be cleared medically. They have to be able to take care of themselves on a day to day basis, for lack of a better term. So they got to be able to bathe and form complete sentences and stuff like that. We can't do one on one with folks. But they're coming to us usually through some sort of medical screening.
So it'd be some kind of substance abuse.
Yeah.
Reason they're coming.
Yeah, they we wouldn't take someone solely on like a mental health thing. That has to be has to be.
You can't take them.
No, they have to clinically qualify, and he could get more into detail. But the answer is yes, they have to qualify.
What about people that have gone through a few days of detox, but they're considered maybe dangerous?
Dangerous by who?
Well, by the police, by the neighbors.
Hi, can you speak to the just bringing that up? Can you speak to just the safety and these new licenses? Will they provide additional monitoring by employees just from residents around? I live very nearby, and there's quite a lot going on all the time. So is this licensing something?
Excuse me, who's speaking?
Oh, I'm I'm. Oh, am I unmuted now? Can you hear me? Okay, anybody?
I can hear you.
We're we're in the middle of another question.
What I'd like to do is have Dawn finish his questions, and I'm glad to entertain.
So sorry. Sounds good.
So the short version is we don't take anyone, any dangerously violent people. And we don't take people that are that have been convicted of sex offenses. We're not going to take people who are on leave from jail. They have to be have served their sentence or on probation and been let out. There's some programs where they technically are still an inmate, but they can reside at a place. We're not. We're not going to get into that sort of thing. So society has said they're okay to be outdoors.
Oh, that that was.
And we do the additional screening for extreme violence and the sex offenses because we that's just not something we're able to to deal with.
Wouldn't want them in the middle of the community. But no, you answered. You answered the question. Those are the things I was concerned about.
Okay, and I'm sorry, then there was I forget her name. She had a question.
My question was just about additional staffing. If there will be like what it will prove, what your additional licenses would provide for that.
Yeah, so if we are able to get licensed, if things go accordingly, we're going to be able to have staff twenty four seven. We'll have at least few staff on at all times, and that includes overnight. And then during the day, we'll have several clinicians on and then some house staff, probably someone cooking lunch and dinner. And right now, as it stands, we only have we have one full time person and two very part time people. Trying to keep track of thirty something plus individuals. When it's all said and done, if we do get licensed, DHS approves our application, we'll have over a dozen employees, and we'll always have someone on site. So it's it'll be like night and day.
Eddie had a question.
Thank you.
Could you just tell me you're listing the types of people that you will take and the type of people you won't take? Are you going to have some kind of a, I don't know, information thing that they sign that says what what that you can have and what you can't have? Well, I mean, you know what I'm saying? You're saying to me, you can't have, we won't take people like this. We won't take people like that. Where is that? Where is that written?
We have a whole policy and procedure. That's something that DHS is going to look at all our paperwork, and that's one of the papers that we're going to give them. And so we have all that. If you want to see the technical stuff, you can.
So you have that will be part of your your.
It's in our official policy. It's already been written. Yeah.
Okay, and that says what you won't take and what you will take.
That says the who would be screened out. And we I don't think we're super clear on who we take, but just by our name, they have to have a substance use issue in order to qualify to be there. They have to have a certain diagnosis that Ron needs needs to approve.
Okay, they have to have a certain diagnosis to be there?
Yeah. Substance use disorder. Would be the main one.
And who would give that to them?
A guy like Ron.
Are you are you a medical doctor?
I'm a licensed alcohol and drug abuse counselor, so.
Sorry, licensed?
Licensed alcohol and drug abuse counselor.
Yep.
Yeah, but can you?
I can diagnose for a substance.
Diagnose.
Yes.
That's scary.
You can diagnose and treat. That's scary.
You can die. Yes, it's very scary. You can. You're not a doctor. You could tell me child say that I am. I have a.
So LCSW LCSWs do the same thing. Their licensed clinical social workers can also diagnose for mental health or substance use disorder. My primary thing is substance use disorder. So.
So so what is your credentialing?
LADC, Licensed Alcohol and Drug Abuse Counselor and a Certified Clinical Supervisor.
And your education?
That is pretty much it. That is it. A lot of continued education, and you have to have so many CEUs every year to keep your license and trainings and yeah. Yeah.
Hey, Dawn?
Just wanted to try to clarify a couple of things.
Thank you.
The town is not looking at this as a recovery. That would wait to sing family residence, and they would know those types of homes are exempt from life safety. But this is more than eight people. This is where we. What is it? It's not a recovery home. What is it? And when I met with the applicant, we talked about a number of things in the ordinance, and it was determined Mark and I participated in a discussion and said, well, the closest thing we see is nursing convalescent home. In a way, the ordinance currently reads for the table of uses, apologize, not in front of my microphone. So the table of uses does allow low impact commercial, and the definition of low impact commercial includes nursing and convalescent homes in similar uses. So it may not be licensed as a nursing home, but the idea of heading in that direction as far as what the use is, is is it a similar use to a nursing home? Here's that likely the case. Then also in the table of uses, there is there's another category that just says uses similar to uses requiring a planning board permit. That's why there's coming in under nursing home, but you don't hear over licenses nursing home because they're saying similar use. Want to clear in that. And as far as the parking goes, there was a previous approval that had parking across the street. We couldn't find any formal agreement and easement or any formal agreement that allowed them to use that formally, you know, as far as meeting the parking requirements. The word could acknowledge that there's some opportunity there. But if they can't meet the parking requirements, that you'd either have to deny the application or grant them a waiver or contemplate a waiver, see if it's justified.
Thank you, Dawn. It's owned by an LLC that is owned, oh, across the street. Not sure. Who owns the restaurant? Okay, yeah.
Was main railroad. But someone told me today it's recently.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Probably the previous. We didn't know it changed change over.
What Dawn's saying it needs to be needs to be finalized and documented.
If you want to, if they want to count that to meet their parking requirement, there should be some formal.
Hey, at this juncture, I think from a board standpoint, I think I've heard all the questions and got the answers. I think it's appropriate to have a motion to accept the application as complete. Go ahead, motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Dawn makes a motion to accept it as complete. Second?
Second.
Aaron seconds. Further discussion on accepting the application as complete. This is not approval. This is not. This is except accepting the application. Discussion? Very no discussion. All in favor?
Hi, this is.
Hi, this is Greg.
Jim?
Yeah.
Let Carrie so the. Yes, thank you. And we have one. All right. So that means that the application is ruled or agreement is complete. The next step is going toward approval. The next step is going toward approval. Uh, with that, I would open it up to the public for input and our questions. And I believe we've had, how many folks are online? One lady spoke to it.
There are four people that are not.
The other folks online that have questions of these gentlemen. Please identify yourself and ask your questions. Hearing none? In the audience. Please come up to the mic and and identify yourself and ask your questions, please.
Hi, my name's Shay Dulac. Um, so you mentioned that if you get the permitting, that you will have a staff of twelve. That means you need twelve parking spots for those staff. Uh, right now, it looks like you only have six, is that correct? Parking spots?
Be twelve people at their, their one time.
Please, you need to step up to the mic and answer the question, please.
Uh, we're not gonna have twelve people working at a time, there may be five in the building at, at once. We're gonna have twelve plus total staff, um, part-time, full-time people. But we don't need all twelve staffing spots, cause that's just.
Next question?
That's not what the ordinance says, you have to have a parking spot for every single staff member, based upon the time they're going to be there. So if they're all there for a meeting, you have to have twelve parking spots.
Or they can carpool.
They can carpool, absolutely. But you have to have the same for the staff. Um, parking lot across the street, I believe that, like I said, it does belong to CSX and you would need to get approval from them.
That's a real, CSX, you said?
Yeah, CSX, they bought Pan Am, Pan Am used to be the line. And I think um, Ted's Track Say Grill only goes to where those boulders are. I think that's the property line um, between those areas. Um, I've worn used to assess, it's very hard to get a hold of. They're not, never, I won't even go on that. Um, so that was my biggest question, oh, and then also, um, so with the parking spaces, have you addressed the concern with the residence that is behind that has the easement? Because there's been many times where that easement has been blocked. And I just wanna make sure that that family continues to have the access that they need.
First of all, yes, um, it's in our application. Um, we marked out spaces, um, the easement is very clear, we've never blocked them in. Um, that may have been reported, but there's a whole ton of room for them to get in and out, no matter how many cars we put down there. Um, but we've come to terms with the neighbor, they're happy, um, with the lines, we haven't had any complaints for months. I can't even remember the last time we had a complaint.
Thank you. Other folks in the audience, questions or comments? Okay, at this point, um, I'm sorry, go ahead. Identify yourself and ask your question.
Hi, I'm Heather Carlton and I am a neighbor of Zisk House. I live between Zisk and um, FireTech and Safety. And so I would support any sort of need of the Zisk House for more oversight and monitoring of their um, clientele that they treat. Just as a matter of, you know, safety and getting the best care that they can get while they're getting treatment. As opposed to what's going on now, which is from what it sounds like is, you know, just one full-time person and a couple of part-time people trying to do the best they can to help this population of, um, you know, people who are struggling with this addiction illness. So I'm, I'm all for, you know, anything that gives this recovery house more support and oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hey, at this juncture, um, it's appropriate to look at the approval process. Is there anyone in, on the board? Open to making a, um, a men, a uh,
A motion?
Motion, there you go, thank you. Motion to approve the application. Greg?
I just wanna make sure that if you make a decision, that um, that part can be addressed somehow. There is a waiver, then they need to provide more, et cetera, but it's clear what exactly gets. Thank you.
That's why I look into Greg to make the motion.
I can make the motion, sorry. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that case number twenty-four dash twelve, Zeiss House LLC ninety-six Route one thirty-three, General Residence District, map twenty-six, lot twenty-five, ninety-six Route one thirty-three LLC owner. Conditional use permit application to allow the establishment of a recovery center uh, be approved with the following condition. That the uh, LLC will meet all of the parking requirements as defined in our ordinance. Um, that uh, if they're doing fifty-one beds, requires seventeen parking spaces uh, for the residents. Um, and those parking spaces are either owned and on the property or they have a written agreement with a landowner, um, you know, across the street or whatever, that they have written documentation that they're allowed to park there, a, as well as meeting the requirement for their staff. Be approved with that condition.
That's it, Greg, thank you. For her second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
This is Jim, hi.
Hey, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Me?
Yes, you look perplexed.
I'm just.
Or you have a question?
I don't have a question. Am I supposed to stand somewhere else? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good input. You're welcome. Move on to number five on the agenda, case twenty-four dash zero one one. Encore Renewable Energy Carlton Pond Road. And it's appropriate to do your presentation at this point?
Can you guys see this okay?
I'm sorry?
Could you see this okay?
Is it showing up?
I, I don't have.
Uh, folks that are online, uh, we can't show a visual, so you'll have to go by your, um, whatever you have for notes.
No, we can see it.
I'm sorry? Thank you, oh yeah, there it is, yeah.
Hi y'all, I'm Kate Tillis from Seavian Mahara Engineers as an acting agent for Encore Renewable Energy. And we'll be going over the proposed point nine nine five megawatt AC solar off of the Carlton Pond Road. Um, so we'll start with some existing conditions, this lot is a, um, they are leasing approximately nine point one nine acres of land from the Augusta, Greater Augusta Utilities. Um, so they're going to access this site off of the existing entrances from their facility, um, off of Carlton Pond Road and they will be building a sixteen-foot access road uh, to reach out to the solar array. Um, on this site, we had wetland work done and there was wetlands located, complex wetlands located throughout the property, there was a vernal pool located, but it was outside of the project area. Um, our wetland impacts is forty-one hundred square feet, so it's going to be less than the forty-three hundred square foot threshold for the um, main DEP NERPA permitting. But because we are developing over one acre or less than one acre from previous area and five acres of developed land, we will be doing a stormwater PBR with main DEP. Um, and we are doing wetland impact, so we will be doing an Army Corps self-verification notification. So, we are proposing to develop on, as I mentioned before, nine point one nine acres, we're gonna clear six point eight acres enclosed um, with, and the solar ray is gonna be enclosed with a seven-foot agriculture fence and gate. Um, out of that six point eight acres of clearing, five point three of the acres will be grubbed and stumped and re-vegetated under the solar rays and within ten feet off of the fence line. Um, and the other one point two three acres will be cleared but not grubbed outside of the ten fence, ten-foot offset to allow adequate adequate use of the solar rays. Um, the access road that I mentioned of the sixteen-foot access road is going to um, have fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty square foot impervious impacts. Um, and as I mentioned before, it's gonna impact the wetlands um, for forty-one hundred square feet. And also within that area, we are going to be um, constructing a fifteen-inch culvert for the stormwater and a rock sandwich to help mitigate the stormwater runoff. Uh, we have also left enough, uh, we have left a fifty-foot vegetative buffer around the whole entire project area to provide um, a buffer from the adjoining properties for the um, visualization and sound impacts around the community, so we do not at this time have any vegetative plans proposed.
Okay, I'm gonna start online, Jim, any questions? Hey, I'm moving to Aaron.
Yes, um.
Alright, go ahead, Jim.
I do have a question, I'm sorry. Excuse my ignorance, but, and I was a farmer for a good number of years, but I don't know what an agricultural fence is. In my experience, there's a thousand different kinds of fences that you use in agriculture.
Yeah, hi, my name's Dan Diff and I'm with Seavian Mahara Engineers as well, and we can move this right up. So an agricultural fence is a fixed knot high tensile wire fence. So it's got squares that are anywhere from six inches by six inches to twelve inches by twelve inches. I think what we're proposing out there is an eight inch by eight inch or somewhere in that, that range. And then you have wooden posts um, that serve to hold it up, so it's very, it's a lot more natural, a lot more farm-looking than a typical like chain link fence. And that was sort of the, the appeal and, and why they're going up on some of these projects is it's a nicer look than a typical gray harsh chain link fence.
Okay, alright, I just, I just wondered, I know engineers have a different way of classifying things than you do when you're just a commoner. And so we would call that something different, but anyway, thank you.
We're shut, Jim? Aaron?
Can you speak to the view shed analysis and distance?
Yeah, so we conducted a view shed analysis using using a DEM from NOAA, um, where we ran a DEM showing what the site would look like, uh, if there was no vegetative buffer. So if we had clear cut all of the property and then we ran another DEM to show if we had the um, twenty, the, the buffer around with forty-foot high trees. And the imagery here is displayed here, um, on the the green is the area that you would see if we did not have any buffering around it. Like if we had clear cut all fifty, all the way up to the property line. And the orange color here is the um, visual that you would see had, had you had the forty-foot tall buffers. So as you can notice, there is a significant reduction.
Greg?
Uh, yes. Thanks, Rick, I've got a few questions, um. So, I think in your application someplace, you were asking for a working year-round and um, I think we were, my preference would be that you, you avoid the winter work window. I can't remember the exact dates, uh, but a lot of your erosion control does not really meet those requirements. So I think my preference was to require you to uh, limit that and do not do construction during the winter work window. Does that pose any problems or concerns to your company?
C three hundred, under the erosion and sediment control notes, we actually have winter construction stabilization um, standards and procedures they must follow between the dates of November, November first and April fifteenth, including um, only allowing an acre of land to be exposed at any time and that the whole entire site has to be mulched at two times the normal rate, um, before any snow event.
Okay, so you're willing to follow those?
Yeah, and Greg, if I could, if I could just add, um, the main DEP permit by rule for stormwater um, requires us to follow those.
Right, okay.
The regular arm for, for those standards, um, that are forcing us to follow those.
Okay, okay, no, that's fine, okay. Um, I got a few more questions. Um, in uh, our solar ordinance, the Town of Winthrop Solar Ordinance, section S four um, subsection or, or a bullet three, we require the vegetated buffer zone uh, in our ordinance. It specifically states that if corn, coniferous trees are not present, they must be planted at least five feet tall and they must be twenty feet apart. Um, I haven't walked the property, so I don't know for sure. I looked at some imagery that's about three years old and it didn't appear that there were, it feels, it, it seemed like especially on the north and and west side, there was a lot of deciduous trees. Um, so we would need to have uh, coniferous trees planted in those areas where there aren't any um, at present. And they need to be, the variety doesn't matter as long as they're going to stay green year-round. Again, in a twenty-foot spread, so obviously in a fifty-foot buffer, you'd need quite a few of them um, to make sure that the uh, the uh, it's blocked year-round, visually blocked year-round.
Our tag team here tonight, yeah, so uh, Greg, I guess the, the question maybe for the board from our, our point of view is that we are leaving fifty feet of natural vegetation there. Um, but you're, you're saying the standard, even, even with that natural buffer that we're leaving behind, this standard requires us to plant additional trees up against the trees?
Correct, yeah, yeah, from, yeah, yeah, from our ordinance, I mean, we, we had some concerns from neighbors previously that didn't wanna see it during the winter season, you know, we obviously lose our leaves for a good six months out of the year. So, um, you know, they said they wanted, and it can be any natural species, you know, something, you don't wanna plant something that's, you know, invasive or something like that, some native species that has a normal height of forty feet, but you're allowed to prune down to twenty-five feet as long as you don't kill the tree, so. Um, so there's, you know, the idea is just leaving it, but planting something that's going to be able to take root and stabilize. And the reason we said it, we wanted to plant five-foot trees was because we had this question too, you know, especially evergreens, you can plant those in seedlings that are, you know, three inches tall. Um, and they probably won't do a very good job surviving, so if they're established trees, their, their ability to survive is going to be a lot greater, so.
Under, understood, that's not a problem uh, for, for us to, to meet that standard.
Yeah, so there's just gonna be, I know there'll be some selective clearing when you start that process. Um, okay, I didn't, I, I looked at the plan, I didn't see the hydraulic and hydrology analysis for the culvert um, labeled in C third, three hundred, three oh one, how did you size that culvert for the flow going through? How did you end up with a fifteen-inch culvert? How did you end up with a fifteen inch culvert? Just, I, I didn't see it anywhere. Maybe it was in the fine print of one of the handouts. I didn't, I have only an eleven by seventeen of the C three hundred and three oh one, and there's a lot of text that I can't read on my copy. So it could be there. I just wanted to ask where the hydrology and hydraulic analysis were to size that culvert.
Uh, yes, so on C D one oh one is the proposed stormwater hydraulic model. And we've modeled it using HydroCAD and a copy of the results for the two ten and twenty five year storm are included in the stormwater management report. And the culvert is diagnosed as one B P in the proposed model.
Okay, I'll, I'll look that up now. Thank you. I think I had one more question. Yeah, your decommissioning costs in appendix M, had this discussion with others. You had it set at eighty three thousand five hundred and twenty eight. I didn't see any building quotes. It is a nice detailed plan, but one thing that jumped out at me is the removal of the wire specifically was set at six cents per foot. That's pretty low. So a lot of times we've been getting quotes like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. A few other numbers appear low. Again, I don't want to get nitpicky, but for this size project to, to remove everything, I mean, we've been seeing numbers probably closer to or over a hundred thousand dollars. So overall, it seemed a little bit low. So I wanted to know if you had any concerns if we increase that slightly. You absolutely get the money back if you decommission it and that decommissioning goes, you know, and you do it. And, you know, it's, it's just something that we're holding in case the LLC goes defunct. We just want to make sure the town's covered and not left with having to do additional clearing and removal on our own. If, if for some reason the project goes defunct and, and doesn't do it themselves.
I guess. So Encore Renewable Energies has been doing a lot of these solar projects through, throughout all of the northeast. And they based all of these numbers based off of their recent projects that they have completed in other local municipalities. So we, we would like to stand on what this decommissioning plan states for their pricing. We can also get in touch with Encore and have them fine tune their decommissioning plan a little bit more if was required.
Could I, could I ask you just a quick question? Greg, is, is the value of the decom, decommissioning plan, the planning board's purview? Or does that go to the council? How does that, how's that work in Winthrop?
It's, it's part of our, it's part of our job. It doesn't go to the council. And it's just something, you know, something that we're looking for to protect the town. I know the state has like this little kind of cheap table and it's really bad. So I, that's why I always ask for, you know, existing quotes, get quotes from actual contractors who have pulled this out. And I know we haven't been, you know, a lot of these have just gone in, so we don't have a lot of quotes for ripping these out. But getting quotes from somebody that we know to make sure that we're getting our, to, to make sure that the town's not going to be left on the hook for tens of thousands of dollars. I mean, that's, that's really what I view our job here on the planning board is to be protecting the town. And absolutely, there's, there's no, except for the upfront cost, there's, there's, there's no risk to the company because you'd get the money back when you did the removal yourselves if it was cheaper. So it's just to make sure the towns, and that's one of our concerns, a lot of the companies and, and solar are coming in as LLCs. They're not coming in as companies we know that have been established for a long time period. And we don't know the future of energy production in five, ten, twenty years. So, you know, is the value of solar gonna be there or not? But again, we want to make sure the town is covered. So we want to make sure our decommissioning costs are reasonable. Like I said, we've had a couple of projects that came through a little bit low. I talked to some contractor friends and they like, no way we could pull it up for that. And, and again, there may be companies out there that can do it cheaper. And I'm not saying there aren't. I just want to see an actual quote, not just a table and a company that says, yes, I could do this tomorrow for this price. So if you give me something from that company that says, yes, we could drive to Winthrop if that was installed and remove it for this price tomorrow, I'd be a lot more, more, a lot more inclined to move forward, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's, you're, you're doing exactly what you should do in your position, trying to make sure the town has the protection it needs for whatever future situation there is. But it sounds like the general construct of the plan, decommissioning plan is solid. You just want to see some more backup for the numbers.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the number's close. Like I said, it's, it's not like you're half or a quarter of what we would expect for this size project. I just, and, and, and the wire removal in particular jumped out at me as being what I thought a fairly small number. So again, I don't think you're that far off from, from probably realistic. I just, it's nice to see something from somebody that says, I could do this tomorrow for this price. That's some kind of a, an established company that, you know, could be put in that position to have to do this removal. Not that we would obviously hold them to that quote or anything, but it, it just gives us that comfort at the town level that, that we feel that, okay, somebody could do this and we're at least close. I'm not, I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect or, or get it down to the penny. It's, it's more just making sure that we're not on the hook for twenty, thirty, forty, or even more thousands of dollars.
Reality check, yeah. And we've done that for other, other towns as well. As part of like a condition of approval or something like that to, to, to firm up that number. So we can, we can go back to Encore and work through that with them.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, we've done that before when we require a permit as well. So.
You all set, Greg?
I am. Thank you.
Don?
Except for, I'm sorry, if you move forward, I just want to highlight that I did put some suggested conditions of approval. On whatever you all decide to move in the direction, making a motion. Consider those.
This may be in our ordinance. I don't know. Greg will correct me if it is. How do we account for inflation? Twenty years from now, your quote's not gonna be anywhere close. So.
Yeah, the state, the state mandates that. So every five years, they have to go back and redo the number. And there is some kind of an inflation number in there. The state, the state inflator and relook table wasn't really that bad. That seemed reasonable. It's just their initial kind of what I thought of, you know, like simple spreadsheet that they put in there for removal is way too low. So the state inflation should be covered and the town's allowed to earn interest on the money. And they, every five years, they're supposed to go relook at it and say, you know, does this cost more or less or whatever? And right now, as far as I know, the problem is there haven't been a lot of solar farms removed. So what it really costs is going to be very difficult. You're getting a guesstimate from a contractor because they haven't done it yet. Because they're still installing them. They haven't really started removing any.
Is that initiated by the town or by the state to redo that quote every five years?
That's a good question. It's in the state plan, but I'm not sure.
So every solar development in the state now is required to get a state permit for decommissioning. And that's, that, that state permit is to relook at it every five years.
Hey, at this juncture, if appropriate, I would accept the motion for the application being complete. Again, this is not approval. This is the application is for your motion. If further discussion? All in favor?
Hi, Greg.
That was yes, Jim?
Uh, yes, I, I am in favor.
You opposed? Okay, I'll open it up for the public. Anybody online with input on this project? More questions? In the audience? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval or what is appropriate? Greg, I'm looking you.
Well, do we have any public comments?
There were none.
There were none? Okay, sorry. I wasn't sure about that. Yeah, I can, I can put forth a motion.
Please.
Motion that case number twenty four dash eleven Encore Renewable Energy Carlton Pond Road sketch plan discussion of a proposed two megawatt solar array. Now, isn't it point nine? Is that just us making it wrong?
It's point nine.
It's point nine nine five on the front. So that's just an oops on our agenda, right? So I'll correct that. So I'll say, discussion of a proposed zero point nine nine megawatt solar array, limited commercial district, map zero zero nine lot, zero six three A and zero six five be approved with the following conditions. The first condition, that the revegetation plan is submitted and approved by the code enforcement officer to meet the state, the town ordinance, including the coniferous trees to meet our replanting requirements. And then the second condition is that the applicant revisit their, revisit their decommissioning plan. And if they can supply a certified letter from the, from the Encore, I believe, was the company that states that they can, they certify that they can remove it for the existing price. I would say leave the price as is. If they cannot, I would recommend a twenty percent increase in the price. Be approved with those two conditions.
Dan Burke? Thank you, Greg. Go ahead, a sec. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Don.
Just want to reference the staff member because there's draft conditions of approval and they are from the, they're actually what's in the ordinance. So it's just helpful to call them out. It says, these are the standard conditions of approval.
Wait a second. Ready, second? Discussion? All in favor?
Hi, Greg.
This is Jim King and I'm in favor.
Be opposed? None? Eric?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number six. Twenty four oh one zero. Avious Engineering, this is the Winata Drive. Who's presenting?
I can present. Glenn Walker from the applicant.
Greg?
Uh, yes. Basically, in November, the planning board approved our solar project at the end of Winata Drive. That solar project encompassed three lots. As one of the conditions of approval, the board asked that we do a subdivision amendment, which we have done and are back in front of the board to present. So basically, my understanding is we're combining the three lots we purchased into a single lot for the development of that solar project.
And the numbers are?
I'm sorry?
The numbers are?
Don, can you help me out? There are lots seven, eight, six, seven, and eight?
Correct. That's correct.
The agenda. Four, seven, and eight.
I'm sorry, four, seven, and eight. Yes.
That's it?
Greg, I had some questions earlier, and if I could just, there was a plan initially submitted that was not a survey plan. That plan might have been one that Greg was looking at, that you had questions about Greg. So the plan that they subsequently submitted is a survey plan. That's why that information appeared to be missing because it was taken off the plan. Didn't need to be reported.
Okay, I, I thought it was in the existing plan. I just, it was just unclear because I was looking everywhere. And you just kind of said what I was looking for is that it's combining lots four, seven, and eight. Because the acres just didn't add up any other way. I'm like, what are we doing? So that makes sense because some of the labels weren't there and that, and it said all these other pieces were included. And I don't know why they needed to be, but, okay, that was, that's, that's really all I needed for the clarification was specifically what lots we were combining.
Go check, Greg?
I am. Thank you.
Jim? Are you there, Jim?
He's the three, seven, zero number. So he's on the screen, maybe unmuting.
Are you muted, Jim? Okay, discussion Don and I had earlier was looking at the map. The two of the lots, the two lower numbered lots are again, fully involved in the solar project. And a smaller portion of the larger lot, which is the third lot. Significant portion of it is unused, lack of a better word, for the solar project. And kind of a housekeeping thing, but it's obvious where the solar array is going. And what we're technically doing is bringing forward the three lots and finalizing the issue that we talked about at the initial meeting and the initial approval. What does that leave for use of the bigger lot that isn't out of that project? Understand the question?
Uh, yes, if this is to the applicant, I'm not sure what we would do that with that back portion. I mean, one of the reasons we moved the solar to where it is, is there's a fair amount of wetlands that we would have to deal with to get back into that larger lot. So at the moment, we don't have any plans for the, I guess, on the portion of lot eight that we do not plan to develop. So that answer the question?
So does that mean in the future, if you had a different use or even that use, you would still have to come back to us for that approval for that use?
I, I would, I would expect, yes.
Greg, you confer?
Yes.
That satisfies my question. I just want to protect us in the future, basically. Okay, anybody have left out? Don?
Just speaking to the clarification you just made, there were several conditions that I recommended and a sixth one, a note added to the plan indicating just clarifying that they must come back for further development of that combined lot.
It's a continuation of the process that we, we're here for tonight, basically. Okay. Oh, this constitutes an, this constitute, the application has been approved. It's satisfying questions we had relative to cleaning up this issue relative to subdivision, right? So motion to say the application's complete, is that an order?
You should, although you're approving it tonight, so I don't think anyone's gonna appeal it, but should.
So I'll entertain a motion to move that the application is complete.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Patient is complete.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Let's move on. Let's move on to any public input? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the application relative to those three lots.
I can go if you want.
Wait, Greg?
I want to make a motion that case number twenty four dash Uh, I want to make a motion that case number 24-10, uh, vast engineering subdivision amendment, lot merger, Winata Drive, Shane McDonald agent, map two lots. It says different lots, so I'm going to use lots four, seven, and eight that we discussed. Um, industrial district, uh, be approved, uh, with moving all of the conditions that we put on the original approval move forward or continue.
And we would add Dawn's point about, uh, if indeed there's a use of that lot in the future, back.
Yes. Correct.
Another couple of other suggestions, a purpose note on the plan, um, would be helpful specifically to what Greg is generally, purpose note is good. And Greg raised that earlier by saying he wasn't clear on what it is the plan was doing. There's no, um, revision box on there, or revision box with the date. Um, and that they're going to have to have the plan signed by the chair of the planning board or the planning board before it can be reported, and it must be reported at the registry.
We can stand up?
Yes, yeah, just like any other subdivision, we have to sign it.
Ready, second? Thirty seconds? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye, Greg.
Aye, it's Jim.
Opposed? Hearing none? Eric? Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Uh, Dawn, one quick question, um, I can, I'll circle around with you to make sure that we get that, those notes on there, the, the way you want them and get it signed by the board. Um, but yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, we're ready for number seven, other business?
So, I really wasn't sure we have any time for this, but I think that tonight highlights, um, work that you've been doing, that we should really forge ahead on that of definitions, uh, in the table of uses. Because, and it is a permissive ordinance, so if you don't state that it's permitted, it's inhibited. But we do have these categories that are, you know, or similar. So the double edged sword is on the one hand, then you could consider all kinds of uses if you have performance standards, to make sure that they don't have a greater impact than they should, since it's greater than the defined use. Um, but we don't have that. So I think that it's, um, leaves, it leaves the town open to potentially inadvertently allowing uses that they may not have contemplated. So I think we should continue to pursue, uh, amending the table of uses. One of the things I had noted that I wanted to do and I have not done for you to review this evening was looking at other communities that had smaller downtowns or villages and looking at the use that they allow. Um, as a jumping off point to say, here's what you have, that you allow, and here's some examples of other communities that you pair yourselves to, whether you feel that what they're doing is appropriate, relative to what you want to do. And use that as an exercise to maybe update the table with some additional uses and consider retrieving the or similar category. So I'd like to provide that to you for the 10th, July 10th.
Might want to move closer to the microphone, please?
I may just be talking low and pretty close to it, so is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So continuing with the table of uses and the definitions. And then, so identifying the uses, putting them in the table, but then you have to decide where they're allowed and where they're not allowed. So it's not just one, one, you have to look at each zone. So it's a, it's a big task.
So, uh, out forward, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had a pretty, pretty full plate tonight in terms of reviews of applications. Uh, the next meeting, you have more applications.
I have two applications. Yep.
Be appropriate for the next meeting, which is the 10th, is that correct?
10th is the immediate next meeting, July.
Next meeting is the 10th, and then, uh, two weeks later, we have the, the next meeting. Would it be appropriate for the board if, uh, we treat the next meeting, the 10th, with those applications? Uh, whatever other information, um, comes up between now and then. And then the following meeting would be a workshop session. And it would be dedicated to reviewing the work we've done on definitions, furthering the table of use, and reviewing and try to bring to fruition the ordinance changes that we reviewed the last meeting. That makes sense. Ready for input? That makes sense, we do that, I think that's a good way to do it. Greg?
I think so. You cut out a little bit in the middle there, so you want to do, you want to do, basically next meeting's going to be a work session.
No, the one afterwards.
Okay, the late July one, okay.
We have items already on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yep.
Applications.
Yep. I'm good, I'll be around, so.
Okay, and then the very next meeting, uh, the, would be the workshop meeting. And we go, we go into that month, understanding that, that's, that's what we're going to do. And then the intent is to bring closer to, uh, fruition, all the work we've done on those pieces. So far, we, I would, we've done a cursory review of definitions. We've done a real good review, I think, of the ordinance revisions. And then the, the table of use i- is another piece of it. That would give Dawn the time to organize that for us in the latest format, form, uh, how it looks. And that's what we would work on, and that, that would be the 24th, is that right? 24th, is that acceptable?
You, you would be giving us other examples of other towns.
That was my intention, was to give you examples so that you could, I mean, some towns have use tables, they have 100 uses. I don't know that's the direction you want to go, but what I'll do is I'll provide you am- ample, um, examples. You can decide what it looks like you want to do.
Is that okay? So with that, I'll work with Dawn with the agendas on those two meetings. And, uh, obviously she's got quite a bit of work to organize this, the first one, but more so on the second one, the 24th. There's going to be quite a bit of work on her part organizing that, so we have good documents to look at and our examples to look at. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be the plan, then. Dawn?
Two pieces of information, the comprehensive plan was updated and I don't recall if we've had a meeting since then.
Which plan?
The comprehensive plan was, the council adopted it formally. And, uh, the zoning map is on the agenda for July 1st, which is this coming Monday. So that zoning map, we'll be ready to sign hopefully Tuesday morning.
Okay. Any other items, Dawn?
I just want a little clarification, you put a lot of work into conditions. Should we be incorporating them as we discuss this project with the?
That's my recommendation.
Or just put it in our mind, so if there's?
Well, I practice, and what, what I have found helpful is write out the conditions. Some of them are standard conditions that you're going to apply to every application and seem obvious. But trust me, after you approve it, people, I had to get a building permit, I was supposed to submit, like they, whether they are being truthful or not, they will claim that they weren't aware. So I like to put out, you know, the standard conditions in, um, and there are requirements in the ordinance that they are required to, but to put it all in one place, um, to put it in the notice of decision, it really just reaffirms that this is what they need to do for next steps.
So if we approve it, like we did tonight, we would say with, we'd include that right in our approval. Okay.
I believe that's a good way to do it.
I think it's good.
And then when there's plan sets, to add those conditions to the plan.
Well, it, it's all covered in this solar ordinance, for instance, but it doesn't hurt to point, there's some things in there, like getting a permit and all that, but it doesn't hurt to point, point out the highlights.
Clients, it's easier when you put it in writing.
Yeah.
Remind them.
I agree. I agree.
I think the, uh, twenty, meeting of the 24th has a potential to be a very, uh, productive work session, in my mind. With bringing together all the work we've done. And, and obviously putting priority on those three pieces we talked about. Uh, very least, getting those put together in formal fashion and getting it beyond us.
So the next step, when you feel that you've, um, concluded those items, would be we'd schedule a public hearing. And then at the conclusion of that, it would go to the council.
Correct.
Is one public hearing?
Just one at this level. And the council has one as well.
Three of them at once, or just do one at a time?
You could technically do them together, but, um, I think unless there's special circumstances, it's best to do them separate. And if something changes substantively, so if you get public input, you could then change the ordinance.
Yeah.
For you, for the recommendation, and if you do that, then you have to have another public hearing because it's, it's different enough. So, but on the surface, it's one and one.
So the public hearing would be during one of our regular meetings?
Yeah. And that would be after the 20th. Any other input on that discussion? If not, any other items we need to discuss? Anybody?
None here.
I'll entertain a mo, I'm sorry, Jim, did you have something? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made, seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much, folks. I think we had a very productive meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.